Call to order the meeting of the, a regular meeting of the East Bethel City Council, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and we'll all say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that.
We'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with the change of having item number five public forum after item number six consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Okay, that buys you time. Plenty of time. Anyway, presentations and public hearings would be the Anoka County Sheriff's Office monthly report with Lieutenant Derek Peters. How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you, sir.
Good. Looking bright-eyed and bushy-tailed.
Nice day out.
Yeah. There still is the sun.
There is, and there definitely is. Well, good evening, council. So, May was our busiest month. We had a total of four hundred and forty-nine calls for service. I said last month that April was, but now May is, so we're starting to get into that warmer period where we're seeing an uptick in calls. We had eight assaults that we responded to, two thefts, four damage to property calls. We made thirty-four arrests for miscellaneous offenses. We performed a hundred traffic stops, which resulted in twenty-six different traffic citations and other violations. A couple of the notable calls that we handled last month, on the third of May at eleven twenty-two PM, deputies were dispatched to a male-female domestic situation in a residence off the two-four-three-hundred block of Highway sixty-five northeast. At arrival, our deputies spoke with a male outside of the house who said he had been assaulted by his significant other. While speaking with the male, the deputies noticed that the male had an injury to the knuckle of his right hand. The male was unable to provide any reason as to why this may have occurred. Deputy spoke with the female party who had injuries consistent with an assault. The male was subsequently arrested for felony-level assault by strangulation. The next evening, on the fourth of May at six PM, Deputy Eldine was dispatched to the area of Highway sixty-five and one-hundred-and-eighty-first Avenue on an assault report. On his arrival, deputies spoke with the driver of the taxi-cab who stated that she was recently assaulted by her passenger. The reporting party reported that she had picked up a female passenger and her dog from an address in Cambridge. It was reported that the female passenger requested to be driven to somewhere in Blaine where she planned on buying THC products. While driving home, the female became belligerent, struck, and bit the driver multiple times. The driver of the cab pulled over and called nine-one-one. Our staff attempted to speak with the suspect, who was still inside of the vehicle. She was visibly intoxicated and refused to answer any questions. The passenger was later arrested for fifth-degree assault and transported to jail. On the twenty-sixth of May, deputies were dispatched to Nexus on an assault report. At arrival, deputies learned that a resident had assaulted a staff member. Deputy spoke with the staff member who had scratches on his left arm. The staff member reported being headbutted several times but had no visible injuries from that. The incident began because the staff member was trying to prevent the resident from breaking things inside of the facility. Deputy spoke with another staff member who had witnessed the assault, confirmed the events and what had happened. The juvenile was later transported from Nexus and booked into the Lionel Lakes Juvenile Detention Facility for fifth-degree assault. And then, finally, on the twenty-eighth of May, at ten o'clock PM, Deputy Madsen stopped the vehicle for expired registration. While speaking with the driver, Deputy Madsen learned that the driver had canceled driver's status and no insurance on his vehicle. Deputy Madsen had the male exit the car and advised him he was under arrest for driving after cancellation inimical to public safety. Deputy Madsen took the male into custody without incident, transported him to jail where he was booked for the gross misdemeanor offense. And as I had stated last month, we're now amid the one-hundred deadliest days on Minnesota roadways. We had eleven crashes last month resulting in some form of injury or another, and we had another twenty-nine resulting in property damage. So, another good reminder, please buckle up, pay attention to your speed, and be diligent in your observations while out on the roadway.
A lot of them crashed on sixty-five?
A lot of them have been on sixty-five. Yeah, we saw an uptick there over the last month. That construction is starting to really pick up, so... As I had said last month, I don't go up that way to come up here, I stick to Cedar, but last I had seen, you know, a lot of those cones are out there and it's kind of tough to navigate, so please just make sure that if you're out and about, keep your speed down. It's going to take you some time to kind of navigate some of the construction barriers that they have out there for safety reasons.
Yeah, they are set up kind of goofy.
Very windy.
Very windy.
I have a question about that. We have those blinking signs that say what your speed limit is, and it says work zone, and it says speed limit, and then flashes, it has sixty-five, and then it has your speed underneath it, and then you get into it about, I don't know, quarter mile, and all of a sudden it says fifty-five. Is that wrong?
No, those work zones are always traditionally less than what the normal speed limit would be, just to provide a little bit of extra safety and get people aware of the fact that we could have workers out on the road.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with that, but it's kind of confusing to go into it where it says sixty-five is the speed limit, you know, and then right away it'll be fifty-five in there. Shouldn't that be fifty-five to warn ahead of time? Because that's a pretty long stretch to go sixty-five till you slow down.
Yeah. Do we have a contact for DOT? I can reach out to them certainly and see if we can get somebody out there to make that a little bit easier for people to understand.
You might want to check that trailer to the north of twenty-two. I went past the last, not last night, said I was doing sixty-eight and I was going fifteen.
Okay.
So...
Are they sure, are you sure they were getting you, Bob?
Boy, I was the only one out there, so...
Those aren't your guys' speed readers though, are they? They're not in the state. Yep, yep.
With the Fourth of July coming up, can you review what the legal fireworks are and any firework safety advice?
Yeah, nothing that shoots into the air. Can't have anything that shoots into the air, has that large report into the sky. That's what we see a lot of the injuries stemming from, so we're very, very inundated with that, those type of calls on the Fourth of July. If you have a complaint that you want to make, certainly call us, we'll get to it when we get to it, but usually we're very, very busy with a lot of that stuff, so...
What's the deal on, is it tannerite?
Tannerite.
Tannerite.
Tannerite? Is that legal?
Tannerite, well, we've shot it, we've used that to shoot on our ranges to simulate explosions, so for us, sure. For the general public, I'm not quite certain. I think I'd be giving bad advice if I said anything beyond that, but it's certainly used for firearms training and things like that, so we have done in the past.
I have seen it sold in stores, so I would assume that it is legal, but I would also assume that there are some rules around its usage.
Limitations on what you can possess.
Yes.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
With the animal calls, animal complaints, what are they normally? Is it noise or is it...?
Yeah, they can be anything, mayor, from noise to dogs or...
Aggressive dogs.
Yeah, dogs. Bite reports, I think actually that's its own category in here. We also have like the dog-off-leash, those ordinances, things like that. Really anything that has to pertain to a wild animal.
So it's not skewed in one, one direction or the other?
Yep, or livestock, anything, anything like that.
We seem to be dumping crumbs.
People where people get rid of their dogs, toss them...
Put them in East Bethel.
Well, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Senna, Chief Senna, East Bethel Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the month of May, the Fire Department responded to ninety-six calls, seventy-six from medicals, ten accidents, two alarms. We have responded to four hundred, as of right now, four hundred and sixty-one calls for the year, and that's compared to four hundred and sixty-six for last year. The call volume did pick up in May, and we're five calls behind last year's call date. We did have an increase in accidents for the month. This can maybe contribute to Highway sixty-five construction, but we're unsure about this. We also get a lot of calls for iPhone crash alerts that have increased also. What that is a feature on all iPhone fourteen or newer that will call nine-one-one. This feature works by detecting a sudden G-force change along with your speech change, a combination of impact force combined with pressure change, and combined with sound levels. When triggered, the crash detector alerts emergency services, telling them that you have been in an accident and pinpoints your location. Your phone can call emergency service and sends a message to your emergency contacts when this, when a severe car crash alerts.
Boy, there's got to be a way to disable that.
There is. The crash detector is on by default. You can turn it off and automated call from the Apple, you go into settings and shut off your emergency SOS. This is a good feature. I'm not recommending shutting it on, okay? All I'm doing is saying, if you leave it on and you do happen to drop your phone or something, and I don't know how high you have to drop your phone from, you may want to just check it when you pick it up to see if it dialed nine-one-one.
Drop it, Eric.
How reliable has that been for detecting crashes and the such?
It works on crashes, but it also works on when people leave their phones on the back of their cars. We found a phone out on two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth. It said there was a crash there. If the phone stays open when they call nine-one-one, it calls nine-one-one, it does stay open, and on that one, it pinpointed, it was like the second telephone down across the road. And we went out there and we found the phone. So like I said, check it before you put it back in your pocket, so we don't show up at your house asking if you've been in an accident. And then too, with the Fourth of July coming up, if you decide to set off fireworks, please be safe. As always, do not hold them in your hands, shoot them at people or at houses. East Bethel has had house fires set up, started by fireworks. More than fifteen, nineteen thousand five hundred fires each year in the United States is caused by fireworks, and an estimated ten thousand two hundred people are injured by fireworks each year. So like I said, be safe, but enjoy your Fourth. With that is all I got.
How's the fire danger out there right now with all the rain we've had?
It's low, still happens, but it is low. It's really green, so we should be fine.
Good. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks. No, I just want to make a comment. I was at your training this morning, very informative.
The firefighter health? Yeah, I have to go do that training right now, so...
Yeah, it was really good. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. Have a good Fourth.
Thanks a lot, Rod.
See ya.
Take care. So we're going to move into item six, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
I'm going to pull F-G-H-I-J.
Say what?
Can you hear me?
F?
G-H-I-J.
Okay.
Pretty much take scare of mine.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to pull? Okay, so... It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Now that would be to approve it, subject to pulling items F, G, H, I, and J. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Item F, Mr. Smith.
I was looking through, actually it's F-G-H-I and J, they're all charges that when we decided that we're going to have the city take over our ICE arena, I didn't know anything about any of these charges. Did I miss something? It was like now we're updating...
Were they included in the numbers?
Yes, sir.
Really? I didn't know anything about that myself.
Was it like startup costs or something? Was that it?
Yeah, this is part of the dollar amount that will be transferred from the user fees to the general fund to cover these costs right here.
So are those costs because we took it over?
Yes.
So then Gibson before already had that covered in their contract?
Right, so we paid Gibson, Gibson ended up paying for a lot of these costs out of the dollars we spent, or gave Gibson for a contract, and now we'll be bearing those costs.
Okay.
But again, it's, you're writing down us, I think it was sixty thousand dollars to the general fund...
Correct.
To cover these costs, so...
So then for F, hiring a seasonal employee, I wasn't aware of that either. Didn't we have somebody on staff that's going to do this?
We have a staff member that's going to manage it, but these are the seasonal employees that currently work there right now that'll be kind of transitioned over to city employees and paid the same amount or similar amount.
And that's, this is a no benefits situation? No cafeteria?
Part-time.
Part-time.
Okay.
Hey, Bob?
So that's item F.
I'm going to tell the ones you answered them. So, Bob?
All right. My question's got answered.
Okay. Make a motion to approve F-G-H-I-J.
Well, you're easy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve items F, G, H, I, J of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. So that brings us back to the public forum. And before we go into it, I'd like to make some comments. Point of, point of privilege, I'll call it or something, I don't know. Anyway, I got four emails from residents of East Bethel. Three of them happened to be identical, which was interesting, and I responded to them, and I wanted to read for the folks here what I responded to your fellow residents. I'm quoting, "I'm replying without copying other council members to avoid any open meeting violation. The only thing that has been proposed is that we discuss the matter of locating a new Anoka County Justice Center in East Bethel. That's it. And my personal opinion as a twenty-eight-year resident of East Bethel is that there would be little appetite for such a development regardless of its potential positive economic impact. I have shared this opinion with our city administrator. Understand that his responsibilities include being aware of potential economic development opportunities for our city and bringing them to the attention of the city council, which he did at our work meeting Monday evening, that would have been the June tenth, twenty twenty twenty-four. As I have assured him, I have assured him that our quality of life is highly prized among East Bethel residents, and that all development opportunities that come up must be evaluated within the context of impact on that quality of life, including access to natural spaces and quote, quiet enjoyment of our properties. I hope this speaks to your concerns. Thanks for reaching out to me to share them," unquote. So that's, that's how I responded to your fellow residents. And just, just, in any situation like this, let's, let's now drill down on the facts, okay? What was being discussed here, just discussed, no proposals have been made. I talked to Matt, someone represented that he made some proposal to the county, hasn't been made, not a fact. The fact is, it's only been discussed. And what we're discussing, just discussing, is not just the jail. It's a justice center that includes a courthouse or courthouses, and we would have to be satellite lawyers' offices, otherwise they'd have to run across the county all the time, approximately a thousand employees, and a three-hundred-and-fifty to more likely five-hundred-million-dollar price tag on the building construction. So it's a major project. It absolutely requires our discussion and attention. Okay, that's just, this, otherwise we would be delinquent in our, doing our responsibilities if we said, oh, no, we're not even going to look at it, discuss it or anything. That's my opinion. Discussion doesn't equal action. They're two different things, okay? In the minutes of the work meeting, which are now publicly available, they're part of the packet for this meeting, the newspaper article, both the newspaper article and in those work meeting minutes, it was mentioned that resident input would be required prior to any action. So that was the intent all along. There was no intent to make a decision on behalf of residents without adding or asking resident input. That's a lie. That's mistake or a lie, one of the two. We even discussed putting it on the ballot in November, okay? So that, we've all been out here long enough that we, we know how the water sewer deal happened, and it's not going to happen on our watch anyway. Similar kind of, you know, ignore what the residents want, we know better, that kind of, that's, that's not our, our approach. You may not like our approach to city government, but at least we don't do that, so... That about covers it on the prelude. And then we have the rules that we use in the, in the fall and spring, I believe, town hall meetings, but these are the general rules for the public forum. We don't, it depends how many people show up. I appreciate your understanding that we, you know, in the interest of time, we didn't need to hear, you know, fifteen different times how the justice center ideal wasn't what you wanted, and that you, I guess, have picked a spokesperson. We appreciate that. And I'll invite speakers who are on the list to the forum. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We generally try to be a little loose with that, but technically it can be three minutes. And so anyway, those are the ground rules, so... Anyway, the first person on the list, and you take them in a order that they're signed up. Ms. Urkel, I don't see your address on here. I'm kidding, I know, I know where Suzanne lives. But anyway, James Lender, you're first on the list.
What were the, the rules for names and addresses, and did you want that or not?
God only knows what they are at this point. Historically, they're, please state your name and address.
James Lender, one-nine-four-two-three, East Trioke Circle. And what I've been trying to get for like five weeks now is just access to view some public records from the city. I sent in a request five weeks ago and came by the council meeting two weeks ago, and nobody has gotten back to me as to when I can come in and view stuff. So that's, that's all I'm asking.
What's the latest on that?
Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to that, I know Kerry was working on it late today to try and finish that up and get that out. It is an extremely large file, and, and it will not be something that we can email. So based on the size of it, that's because of the time. Compiling all this, I know we have probably, I would say in excess of thirty staff hours into this one. It's not a small request, as was indicated at the last council meeting. And, and so what we'll do is we'll have to arrange with you to bring in a laptop. We can provide you with a thumb drive to view this information. If you want it printed out, there are charges associated with that, and we should have that in the next couple of days for you.
Well, thank you, because all I was really interested in was viewing it in whatever vehicle you guys want to use for that, it's fine with me. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's the lucky person who's designated the spokesperson?
I'm not on your list because I didn't see that sitting here.
Oh.
I looked over there, but I didn't see nothing. So, do you want my information?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Full name's Donald, last name's Saviny. Resident for thirty-six years. Since nineteen eighty-eight when we built our house out here, and out here, been at many council meetings, been very involved with the SCOUT program.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Is he measuring okay on the mic? I want to make sure you're recorded.
Can you hear me?
No.
Yeah, if you could just speak a little closer, that'd be fine. But also your address, sir, if we could?
Yep. Address is two-zero-zero-one-zero Madison Street.
Is that working right now?
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to talk and hopefully won't take more than three minutes. You kind of touched on the fact that citizens really have no clue that this has been going on, really, there's a lot of misinformation out there.
As far as I know, it's a recent development. How long has it been? Because they had to change the law in order for someplace other than Anoka to be considered for this.
Correct, because it's not in the county seat.
Right, right. So when did that happen, do you know?
Yeah. We've only had one meeting on it.
That was the last meeting that we've had on this. Subsequent day was a county meeting, and, and so, but the law changed as of the end of the legislative session when all these bills were granted through.
Sorry to interrupt, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, it was an omnibus bill that went through at the end where they threw a whole bunch of things. I work for state government, so I understand it very clearly. And it went through. Doesn't mean it's always the best bill to have, but it happens. There are a lot of concerns by citizens, and one, I remember the sewer and water thing. I also remember the mental health care facility where I personally did research on the individual, stood up here and told our mayor Voss at the time, the record of this individual is this. He still went over to Forest Lake, convinced them to come over and said, we'll get it through. They got it through. Exactly what we said was going to happen, happened. Within a year, he took the gravy out the top and flew the coup. And the citizens are still feeling that. They still, you know, the facility is back up and running, which is a good thing for the tax base and things such as that. But do we want to jail that close to a bunch of individuals who are, have mental capacities that are already strained, where you're going to be roughly a half a mile when these individuals get about out at three AM in the morning?
We, we had no discussion of site locations.
There's none of that, that is, do you see on social media?
I don't do social media.
I don't respond because I just read the minutes from the last work session and the last council meeting. There was, if you look at the minutes on the work session, it says jail, no discussion. That should have stopped or at least made people want to read the whole story.
What we don't have, I mean, we have the East Bethel newspaper and all these other things, we haven't got the whole story. We don't, I mean, you don't have the whole story the way it sounds. That's where everybody's getting it from, is the location's going to be on the intersection of Highway sixty-five and twenty-two.
We don't own that property. Bob King owns it.
But eminent domain was talked about by the city staff. That eminent domain could be done to take that property. Oak Grove did it when they took property up in by Lake George and built a building. That can happen, I understand that. But we just don't want it there. There's communities, there's, there's people living closer there by the water tower. There are schools within a couple of miles from it. Within a half a mile, you've got a school across the highway, you've got the senior facility right there. We're the farthest northern city in the county. If you look at Anoka County's crime statistics, the majority of the crimes committed in Anoka County are in Columbia Heights, Fridley, and southern Spring Lake Park. When it was asked, how, what's going to happen to these individuals when they get out of jail? Mr. Look, my wife talked to you. You told her, I was on the, listening on the phone, well, we'll have to find some way to transport them back. Who's paying for that? When they get out at three AM, there's no infrastructure here for buses. There's nothing for them to do but wander around.
You're talking about the residents of the jail?
When, and when an individual is...
Or the people who work? People, I'm asking, are you talking about the staff?
No, I'm talking about the individuals who are released from jail. They're released at all times of day and night. When the judge sentences them to so many hours, that's what they get paid or they get incarcerated for, and it could be three in the morning. Yeah, they can make bail and get out. Tell that to the officer who was just killed in Minneapolis. That individual was let out on a no-bond bail, and the next day he shot the officer. I'm concerned about that. I've lived out here a long time.
No, I understand.
We don't, we don't believe this should be in here. Crimes are going to go out. Statistics show they're going to go out. When you're bringing this element in here, you're going to be... When you're bringing this element in here, you're gonna be housing federal prisoners. Don't hit yourself, it's not just the drunken driving and these kind of things. They're gonna be federal prisoners housed here in a justice center in the jail. They're gonna bring elements here that I don't think anybody in this city wants. On your own, what did I put that? On your own, um, commission statement and thing, the city says strategically plan for growth areas while maintaining the non-urbanized character of the city. This is urbanizing the character of the city. This is going totally against what we've been going as citizens. And everybody, and I don't, I, I have not talked, have you got any emails, Mr. Mayor, that has said, yes, I want a justice center out here?
No. No, that's, and that's why I read my response, is I'm on the same page you are.
I just think, you wanna put this in a good location in this, in this county, put it in Ando, have them put it in Andover, suggest that to them. They've got the brand new sheriff station on Hanson. They got the brand new nine-one-one facility there. All that land between there is owned by this, the county. Put it there, they've got nothing but area behind that to the east to build this facility.
You know what the drivers are, is the cost of the land in Andover is considerably more.
The cost of the land in Andover and there's a lot more citizens there.
Well, the thing is, that as county residents, we're all gonna pay for this, whether it's in our city or not. But, uh, what other, what other points do you have?
I gotta go back to my other page. There's gonna be a lot more traffic. We already got intersections on that intersection on sixty-five. I mean, there's, you look at the accident reports on the, on the city's website, there's always accidents there. It's, it's just gonna add to it.
Yeah.
And so, I think the, in this work meeting, you guys talked about getting the citizens involved. And I think that's a good thing. I mean, what you do with sewer and water and things like that, but I think you need to let the citizens know in a more public forum than what's going on. It needs to be out there in multiple medias to tell the citizens, we're considering this. What are your thoughts? There have been, tell them right out, just what you said. There's no decisions, we have no location, we're just open to feedback. You wanna build the trust of the citizens in this city after the things we went through in the past few years? Start getting them involved. If you wanna put out a survey, have it approved through a citizen committee that can look at it, so the questions they can't say are slanted. Make sure that there's involvement, because if it comes from city staff, they're, you and I both know, they're gonna say it's slanted one way.
Right.
Let the citizens be involved here. There'll be people who wanna get involved.
And speaking of the city staff, I hope everybody got my point, that it was Mr. Look's job responsibility-
I understand that.
-to bring this to our attention.
Absolutely.
Oh, it was. If he, if he didn't, he would, he would've been delinquent and doing his job. 'Cause we have to know about any potential development, even if we don't like him at all, we have to know about him, you know?
If somebody's coming here, wants to do something, this council makes the determination. It's the city administrator's job to tell you about it. Not to decide, to give you the pluses, give you the minuses. We get that. But right now, the citizens have very little trust in what comes out of the city offices.
Understood. I, I lived through the water sewer thing too with you.
Yeah, it, it's, it's left a really bad taste in a lot of households.
For, for the record, I did vote against the sewer water project.
The only member of the city council who did. That's why he's on the city council now, 'cause we knew he had integrity.
No, I, I understand.
I understand what you're saying.
But no, with, with this nexus, once Cambia, Cambia, whatever it was, was in here, that property down there is zoned for that. That's what has to replace it. If we would've refused them, they still would've got it and we would've wound up with a multimillion dollar lawsuit. I wasn't on the council when they rezoned that property down there. I got, can't change it. Once it's there, they got a condition of use permit that goes with the property. So it's not like we could say, no, you can't do that. Nobody up here, I don't think, was here when Cambia was coming in.
No, but that, nobody knew what happened there, because the council and the mayor at that time did everything behind the scenes.
I get it.
That's the, the implication that's happening with all of you right now, just so you know. People are creating a non-trust with their government, and that's a bad thing for us.
Well, hopefully, our being open tonight will help in that regard.
And then reach out and tell the citizens what's going, we didn't, I, I couldn't tell you that any of the details of the sewer and water, than what I heard through hearsay.
Yeah.
You know, there was hearsay that they, the, the new council was gonna cancel the contracts and the contractor said, I'll sue you for the money. I don't know if that happened, but that's not, I don't, but we had no clue about that.
Yeah, it's not-
It was done behind the scenes, just like the Cambia thing, when it originally started, before it was rezoned, it was all done behind the scenes.
Can't run a local government that way, that's-
I was at the meetings at the church when they brought in their little product.
Yeah, I was there too.
I attended two meetings and I didn't hear a single positive, other than, other than the people giving the presentation.
But it was still pushed through, and that's what would've happened to all of you, or us. We don't want that anymore. We wanna be informed.
Maybe people should go, it's great to see this many people at a council meeting.
Yeah.
Careful what you have for.
It is good.
We don't know what everyone in the city is thinking.
No.
Good, bad, or indifferent, one of the first things we did is put the public forum back in.
Yep.
Because I, it was taken out because people didn't wanna hear the bad feedback. Well, how do you know what you're doing wrong if people aren't telling you? East Bethel is so spread out, like this situation, by the time the rumors get going, I mean, I heard, yeah, they're gonna build a jail and put a motor on it. I mean, you know, facts are facts. Fallacy is fallacy.
But provide us the facts of what we're saying. I mean, I went on the web today to, and I searched East Bethel City Council Agenda for tonight. And it came up and there was a link, and when I clicked the link, there was no page to it. So I took the initiative, most people won't do this, but I took the initiative to call city staff and they said, don't go to that site. Go to our, our site and here's where you'll find it. They, your staff had to walk me through finding it, and I, I'm on computer all the time. I, it took a bit, and she told me, where you go, don't go to this, though, you gotta go to this. It needs to be easier for the citizens to get at, it needs to be easier for us to read. And I guarantee you, you start doing that, you will get more attendance at the council meetings, because people wanna have input.
Yeah.
They wanna know what's going on, so that we can make an educated vote, where we have to vote for council members if anybody retires and things, or whatever the case may be. But to do that, we have to be informed, and we haven't been on this, at all. I mean, I feel left out in the dark.
It's a new thing, too, so.
But everybody I have talked to-
It's not like we've been sitting on it for six months or keeping it to ourselves, you know?
Everybody I have talked to has said, why would you put that in the northernmost city of the county? Now, every squad is gonna have to drive from wherever they are up here. Currently, they're driving to Anoka.
That doesn't make any, and I think, I think it, in fact, it does. It says it in the first paragraph of the work meeting notes from June tenth, when the subject came up. I, I, it quotes me as saying that normally, you know, county seats are located in the center of a county. Same as most state capitals are located in the center of the states, that's from, so ease of access for, for people. And I said, the center of this county is more like Anok, Andover.
Yep.
I said, not East Bethel, you know? And so, we're on the same track with that, too. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh,
That's the location.
And it's frustrating, you know, it, it's just part of this job to be accused of things that aren't true or to be, have words put in your mouth. But it's just part of this work, you know, you just, I mean, if you got a real thin skin, I guess you should stay off of city council.
I'm not here accusing you of anything, I'm just telling you what the, what the citizens have told me.
My wife is kind, I don't care for Facebook, my wife is kind, kind enough to let me know things, whether I wanna know them or not.
That's because they, they haven't been informed. They haven't. And when they try to find it, they run into what I ran into today.
Yeah.
So, um, when it was in the ABC newspaper, I don't get the ABC newspaper.
Me neither.
No, and so, and, and, and all of a sudden, somebody says on Facebook, did you hear that they wanna put a jail on twenty-two sixty-five?
Yeah.
Like, what?
We got a billboard on sixty-five. This is something that, provide feedback.
But did you notice in the paper, they didn't interview any of the council members, they didn't, didn't interview the mayor? Nobody asked any questions. It's, well, let's print what's gonna sell the paper. Doesn't matter if it's true or not. And I'm not saying they lie, but they don't give you the whole truth.
Where do they get their information then? They talk to somebody, sir. So you may wanna talk to them if they're misquoting you.
They were quoting Mr. Look.
Mr. Mayor, if I can speak to this, uh-
Matt, you're not familiar at all with that newspaper.
It may not be the first time they've misquoted.
He's a former chairman of the Anoka County Commissioners.
Um, if, if I can just take a quick step back. First of all, I, thank you for the civil conversation here this evening.
Yeah.
You know, I have flak jackets over here for, no, I'm kidding. But, um, but basically, this is a very unusual law that's changed, um, and it's created a significant problem for our sheriff. Um, and what I will tell you is that, um, the jail that we currently have right now in the county is, is at capacity. And so they're sending people out to other jails and other communities, uh, they're transporting them. It's very dangerous to transport. You need two deputies to transport, it's costly. And, um, and so, the, the challenge that we're having is that the judges, when they're hearing a case and they know that the jail is full, they'll release people because there's nowhere to put them. And I would argue that our community is less safe as a result of that, because people probably should be incarcerated at that point for various different issues. But they're incarcerating the worst of the worst, and that's filling up the jail. Um, but nevertheless, um, we had a conversation at the county, strictly a conversation, here's some hypotheticals, okay? And, uh, and unfortunately, the article's written in such a way that this is where it's going, et cetera, et cetera, and, and the community's upset about it. The one thing we did talk about in that work session was that the public would need to be involved, um, that it could potentially go on a ballot, and that also there would have to be a public information campaign on this to give the pros and the cons, as you had indicated. And I think at that point, people can say, what's the upside, what's the downside, and is it worth even considering this? And that's, that's a longer process than the five-minute article that was written by ABC newspapers to sell newspapers, right? They jumped the gun, they created this problem, and what I'll refer to them somewhat as, is, uh, social media arsonists, in that they're just trying to burn it down. And so, but the problem still remains that we have a, I think we have a community here that's pro-law enforcement.
Absolutely.
Um, we, we enjoy the fact that, you know, although we see some numbers going up, Derek, there's still, you know, you guys are doing a great job of keeping things down.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I think we would wanna support the sheriff, however possible that we could. And while this may not be an option, there may be other options that we could support them with. So this is, again, just a conversation, just a conversation. And you guys are expressing your discontent and there's, and there are, were people on Facebook that said, yeah, I think that's a better idea than, what did they say, another auto body shop or something? I, doesn't, I'm not beating up on auto body shops.
Dollar General.
Dollar, that might've been it, that might've been. Um, but at any rate, um, there were some for it, there were a majority against it, whatever the case is. And I think, um, and I think once all the information is out there, both sides, pros and cons, are heard. People can make their decisions at that point. You could potentially have it on a ballot, people can make that decision, and you can go from there. It can be a civil conversation that the community can weigh in on. And I think that was the path we were going down.
We really do appreciate you being here and your input, we really do.
And I will tell you, reading this minutes from the meeting, I've read them four or five times, and I've made notes, um, that there's definitely gonna be a public forum is nowhere near. It, it, to me, it is members saying, we need to probably get the public involved, but with the reputation that East Bethel's had, people are leery of that. I will tell you, from a jail standpoint, transporting individuals, a lot of times they're transported because there's somebody else in that jail they can't be in the same jail with. So they transport, they share with Sherburne. That happens all the time. Um, if they're needing more beds, they, they already said, the parking ramp, Anoka's already said, that parking ramp is dilapidated, needs to come down, add on to the jail there. That's the simplest, most cost-effective solution for all of us as county individuals living in this county.
My own, my own-
Makes no fiscal sense to move it to the furthest, more city, most city in the county, to think that it's not gonna have a cost effect.
My, my personal sense as an adult fellow resident is that we're being used as what's called a stalking horse to get Anoka to agree to what they have, have so far resisted. Because it doesn't make any sense to move it everywhere, and all the lawyers have to move and everything, you know, courthouses have to be built and all that. It's like, you know, well, how much do you want this to cost, you know, more than the value of all the property in Anoka County or what?
Has the county addressed what they're gonna do with the building? How about all the lawyer offices that are on there are not gonna be moved? You're gonna have so much vacant property.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not our, our problem, that's theirs.
But that, but that puts heat, that puts heat on them to knock it off and agree to do it. I, that's my personal opinion. Nobody's told me to think that way, but I've been around and watched how politics are played, and they like to, they try to find a leverage point on you. And here, it's, you're gonna be a backwater town if you don't operate as a county seat.
And in the minutes it said, in the notes, it says that there will be more police presence in the, in the city. That police presence will be either transporting to or going back to the assigned area that they're supposed to work. They're, it's not like they're coming here, gonna hang around and say, hey, I can help you guys when I'm here. Those officers, short-staffed as they are, have to get back and patrol their area.
Yeah.
And, and again, like, family in law enforcement, um, and everything like that, multiple members, and therefore, I support them a hundred percent. We constantly see officers, if we're at Sandwich Shop or something, they're behind us, we pay for that meal because we respect them and, and what they do. We're very much for law enforcement.
Yep.
It's just that this is, makes no fiscal sense, this makes no security sense for this, because there's no way to get these individuals out of here at three AM when they're released, 'cause their time is up. They cut them free. Where are they gonna go? Are we gonna pay to transport them back? There's a cost, somebody's gonna pay for it, and I haven't seen that or heard of anybody thinking about that.
Any, any final thoughts or?
No, thank you for letting us speak.
Can I say something? He said I had to come up here. Can I say something, Mr. Look?
Yeah.
When you said, and I do not speak in front of public, this is really hard.
You have to speak into the microphone. That's, you think talking's hard, and remembering you're talking to the microphone's even harder. Your name and address, please.
My name is Michelle Dowd Savini. I was a deputy at the Anoka County Jail, so I'm fully aware of their, whatever. When you said that a lot of the times the judges might not, um, sentence the inmates to something, 'cause there are not any room in the jail, that's not true. Because they, when they're sentenced, then they go to prison. Very few people do fifteen, thirty days at the jail. We have, you know, I used to, I used to have sixty men to myself in the cell. We would send inmates out to Sherburne, we would send them, they would send them to us. We had federal, federal inmates. Depends if, if the, the dynamics of the jail, if we couldn't have certain inmates in the different cells, we'd have to, you know, be rotating in that strip. But the jails, it was never, the judges wouldn't say, you know, we don't have any room, so we're not gonna punish them. We're not going to, we don't have any housing, that's just not, that's not gonna happen.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to that, not to argue with you about it, but as chair of the county board, I was dealing with all sorts of budgetary, uh, you know, factors as it related to this. Um, they're never gonna say that on record, of, we're not gonna, we're not gonna lock you up because, you know, we can't fit you in the jail, but that, in fact, was happening. Um, and it does happen, and they're released on their own reconnaissance. It's a, it's a common term. Uh, so, again, they kinda gauge, you know-
It's 'cause we're weak judges.
That may very well be the case, and I won't get into that, because, uh, you know, I don't wanna turn any judges against us, but anyway.
Anything else.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, uh, Ms. Morrison, were you covered by the person who was the spokesperson?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And Ms. Urkel, were you covered by the spokesperson or?
For the bail, pretty much.
Well, you can make other statements.
Hi, I'm Sutana Colly, upon Okinawa Street, and I still think, having to give your address up here for the world to see, so they can come and vandalize your house, if you say something they don't like, is not a good idea.
Hmm.
You have it on paper, that should be good enough. Our name should be good enough that we say up here.
Actually, you didn't put your address on here.
I know. It's because I was in a hurry.
I'm just giving you a hard time, Suzanne.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, I was in a hurry. But it, but you have my address. I put it on a gazillion of these. Um, I do wanna have one question about the jail, and because I think of the sewer water, I think of everything. The Met Council forced a lot on us. How can we be assured that the state or the Met Council or somebody is not going to force this on us, because it was brought up? It was offered to the county at that one meeting?
I'm not sure, but from a legal standpoint, there, Eric, what do you think? I don't think so.
I mean, you guys could vote, and they's like, oh, we're gonna sue if you don't accept it.
Well, one of my, one of the biggest surprises I've had as a resident here was when I got involved in this and learned from people who were inside, like Bob, uh, who I didn't, I never talked to all that much, even though we lived two houses apart. Uh, but I, I found out that it was, the Met Council was actually recommended a delay of seven to nine years on that water and sewer project. They weren't proponents of it. It was our people- It was our people on, our, our city staff and on the city council who were the proponents of it and pushed it. And that was the biggest shock that I've had because all these years, I thought the, it was the Met Council's fault for forcing it on us, and that is not the way all that stuff happened. That is not, I've heard it from people who've been around here a lot longer than me and who are on the inside track, and they said, no. The Met Council said that's, you're getting ahead of yourselves. You need to delay that for seven to nine years, is what I was told. That really infuriated me then. Because it's your, it's your local elected people who, you know?
So, but can you guys assure us that this won't be forced on us now that it was brought up, or is it still a possibility?
For everybody else here. How long have you known me?
I've known you, several of you.
Quite a while.
You since I got on the council, um.
But I couldn't possibly assure you with this state government that we've got, I can't assure you that any, about anything.
So, it's possible. Okay.
Well, anything's possible.
Anything's possible. All right. Anyway.
Especially if you're willing to pay no attention to laws, you know?
Um, I wanted to talk about that B-Rock, uh, thing because I was on the council when it, it first came out.
I thought it was Brock. What, what is Brock?
Or Brock. I, I call it B-Rock because it's two capitals right there. Um, when I was on the council, they had a whole room full of almost every single neighbor except the one who complained. And that guy had just recently retired, and he didn't like it there. I don't think it takes down anybody's property values. They've been there for fourteen, fifteen years now. I, I thought back then that they could get the variance. They go through state inspections, um, to make sure that they follow all the mechanic things. They've been here so long, it's their livelihood. I, I just think that because you offer, you grant that one a variant, you don't have to grant every single one that wants to come in.
Are they a neighbor to you?
No, but I've been by there and, um, their neighbors spoke to me, and they just kind of complained about the guy who complained, you know, that, I'm not going to say what they said, but, um, so, but this room was full, and that's why they kind of tabled it and didn't make a decision that night. And then, the next couple of meetings, they really didn't have anybody, so they went.
Well, like we said, we don't want to do this, you know, as far as being sticklers about the zoning. And on the other hand, those zoning laws exist for a reason. So, if maybe those neighbors could get the, uh, one complainant to relent, then the whole matter goes away, and we're not going to pursue it if, if he withdraws his complaint, you know? Like I said, it's a complaint base.
But you know how hard it is to deal with some neighbors.
Person and see if they can.
Some neighbors you can't talk to.
Could change their minds. Well, no, it's not our job to talk to them. We're not neighbors.
Well, no, I understand, but some of you have experienced neighbors who are non-negotiable. I know what you, you mean. Well, that, I just wanted to give my, uh, opinion that.
No, I appreciate it.
Every, you do variances for some people, um, maybe double-think this one. The other thing I want to bring up is, I'm just wondering if that sheriff's report can be put on the website in its own little spot because people don't see that, that, everybody doesn't hear it, and all those little, um, things are things that people need to watch for and be alert of. And half the time, I don't hear everything he says. I miss them a bit. So, I know a lot of other people probably do too.
Isn't that data privacy problems? Or could that be posted?
The data, um, Mayor, Councilmember, the basic data that, uh, we receive as well as the report that is written, uh, read into the record, that's all public.
So, that could be posted.
So, that could be posted.
So, even with a red banner, what's hot, hot crimes, you know, and even.
Well, now you want to highlight it.
Highlight it, yeah.
Well, the easiest thing would be not, instead of all the data, is just have a, a link to the packet that has the data. You just say, look at, you know, crime stats or whatever, click here, and it takes you to that page of the packet.
But also, if there's a hot topic, I, I just think the website should have a, a banner of.
Well, we've talked about upgrading our website. I don't know where that stands right now.
Where people can click on that banner, and it will take them straight to it. Not where we have to search on where would this be?
That's what I'm talking about. When I make, when I say a link, that's what I mean.
Right. Yeah, I agree. All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes our public forum. I'd like to thank all of you for making the time to come up here and
Thank you.
Taking the time.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember, uh, I could maybe suggest, since there was one single spokesperson for all the residents who did take the time to get here, I noticed that the spokesperson had a tablet for those residents that are willing and want to make it known that their presence was here. Maybe you could just write down your name, and once all those that wanted to have identified, could then bring it, uh, you know, right up to the desk and so forth, so that we can make sure that you have a record of it. I just want to acknowledge your presence here today and make sure that those that wanted that presence acknowledged and so forth, that we have a formal record of that.
Leave it up to you.
If we gave you an email address, would there be a way you can forward us information that comes out about this topic?
Um, get on a city website.
Yeah, uh, what, yeah, what I've heard is, is that you want more information in the city website, and the city administrator can deal with that. I mean, you, I think you have to understand that.
That's a lot of staff time to do it individually. Councilmembers or, call that guy right there, that Aaron Burr. Didn't want to feel left out, Eric.
As, as, as the city attorney, I can let you know, that doesn't even rise to the level of petty misdemeanor, so you're fine.
All right. Well, with the public forum, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and new business? Says none, none, none.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Department reports. It says none, 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 none. And then, nothing next to city administrators. Do you have something?
Yes, I can give you a quick update here, Mr. Mayor. Um, just want to, uh, I know there was a little comment tonight about, um, urbanizing the city and that. And, and we do have, um, as you all know, kind of zone down the sixty-five corridor, kind of
Yeah.
B-two districts and areas where we're going to be focusing on commercial industrial type of work. We are starting to get more requests on commercial spots. Um, so you're starting to see kind of some of that interest now, kind of what we talked about earlier with the investments that are made in sixty-five, and some of this will be coming. And some of the interested parties are, um, are common retail, fast food type of people. So, it's interesting to kind of see that trend kind of coming in here. And, um, at least inquiring as to, uh, what lots are available, is there city sewer and water, that sort of thing. So, uh, I want to make you aware of that. Uh, tomorrow, there is a county board meeting at nine-thirty. I'll be attending, and that'll be, um, the signing of the assessment contract for the city.
JPA, yeah.
Yep. And if there's any questions, I'll be there to answer those. Otherwise, I'm, I'm guessing that that'll probably go through pretty smoothly.
Which we approved as part of the consent agenda tonight.
Yep. And has been signed, and now just needs to be ratified by the county board. That's tomorrow morning at nine-thirty. Uh, the LMC, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Conference is in Rochester this year from Wednesday to Friday. Both Aaron and myself will be attending that. He'll be, um, will be out of the office for Wednesday through Friday, although we'll be reachable by phone, so not, not an issue there. Um, I do also want to say that I, um, had a great conversation with the Met Council Administrator. New administrator they have there, Ryan O'Connor. And, uh, we've worked together in the past on county-related things. He comes from Ramsey County as their county manager, and now is the administrator for the Met Council. Sharp guy. And, um, and the conversation, of course, was the, uh, was the plant, the Met Council plant, and the efficient operation of that, or what they're hoping to get to an efficient operation of, and, and kind of some of the options that might be on the table to help mitigate some of the, some of the debt that, um, that is on that. I know we've talked about that in the past, that that, you know, if there's options out there, you want me to look into some of those. So, uh, it was a very interesting conversation with them. And I think, um, if I take him at his word, he's going to do what he can to see about helping us out. He recognizes, um, kind of the history. Uh, he too shakes his head a little bit about why this went down. And, um, and so, we're both kind of like-minded, saying, okay, well, bygones be bygones. What can we do to try and, you know, uh, make lemonade out of lemons type of phrase that's out there? And, uh, and he's agreeable to that, so we'll be working on that. Um, if you notice, and maybe you've heard, that camera right above, uh, the city attorney there, um, is grinding away. Uh, these, these cameras, when we have a power outage, one of them goes down, or multiple go down, and we're continuing to have problems with the system here. I just want to make folks aware that, um, that, you know, we rely on these systems to pick up audio and video so that people can watch these things. Um, and, uh, and it's a very important tool, I think, for folks to keep, as they, as they wanted to be informed of what the city is doing. And so, if we have a system that's suspect at times, failing at other times, and somewhat falling apart, um, I just wanted to kind of, kind of pu- put the information out there that we may need to consider a newer system at some point here, um, as we're continuing to struggle with this.
Well, have we had an expert evaluate the system and give us a phase one, phase two kind of breakout of?
That's the next phase, yeah. The next phase is to have them come out and, uh, and kind of go over the entire system determined. We've had a lot of components have been put together and piecemealed. And we have, uh, software that is no longer being, um, uh, you know, companies don't even know that that exists anymore. They can't even service that software. Uh, and so, it's, um, it's, it's a difficulty for our staff to try and do shortcuts and Band-Aids and workarounds.
Oh, it's inefficient, yeah. So, spit in a wish isn't going to do it anymore, is it?
Bubble gum may not work either. So, we're, uh, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to do the best we can with the, with the system that is now. And I just, um, would encourage folks to be open-minded to possibly replacing the system to a more state-of-the-art, one that's protected and able to be serviced a lot easier in the event of a problem, so. Anyways. Aside from that, short of any questions, that'll conclude my report.
No, I know back in twenty fifteen, after I left office, is when they purchased another system. I don't know if this is the second one, but they spent almost two hundred thousand dollars on it. And I didn't think this was any better than what it was before that.
Yeah, they can be very costly. I might be high on two hundred thousand. I would sure hope it's high on two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt it'd be every bit of fifty thousand.
Well, and then they were going to, they had a screen mounted on the front of the Diaz. They took it away because it didn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, uh, that concludes item eight G, the city administrator. So, nine other. Any further staff reports?
I just want to point out that having, uh, the amount of residents we came in tonight, who came in tonight.
That was great.
That's exactly why we brought the public forum back.
Yeah.
You know, to hear them.
It's not about what makes us feel good. It's about making sure we know what the residents are thinking. Uh, any council reports?
Well, I just got two things. First off, I want to say, happy Fourth of July. We won't have a meeting before that, so I hope everyone has a happy Fourth of July and a safe Fourth of July. And second, I think we should really reconsider broadcasting our work meetings again. Because without that, there's only rumor and speculation going around about a conversation where minutes don't come out until we have our next meeting. If that meeting was broadcast, uh, on our website, residents could watch that and see what was actually said by the city council. And any future conversations that we have about that jail should absolutely be broadcast.
Well, yeah.
Well, I don't know. Just take whatever's gone in the work session, just put it on the regular council agenda.
What? Could you, no, could you repeat that?
Take whatever's on.
Not for my sake, for everyone else's.
Schedule or agenda, and just put it on the regular council meeting like they used to be.
Work meetings always used to be televised, broadcast.
No, I'm talking before the work meetings came to be. That was somebody else's idea that's not here.
That would have been a long time ago.
So, what did they do? Just have, uh, just discussion, action, no action?
Well, when the sewer water fiasco was going on, we had meetings till eleven, twelve at night.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about on a normal.
Normal night, you'd still get out at nine, nine-thirty. The facts. And it costs extra money to have somebody come in on a work meeting. We do pay overtime, right?
Or, well, it's compensatory time off.
Critical, then we call it a special meeting. That can be called by at least the mayor and one council member.
Or two council members.
City administrator. Oh, ready, you're done?
That's what I wanted to say.
All I want to say is, um, last weekend, there was an event on Coon Lake where somebody in the boat that hangs out at, they call it Whiskey Flats. Anyway, he was pulling an inner tuber around, and he deliberately kept trying to run over the geese. And unfortunately, he succeeded in killing one. So, if you see somebody doing that kind of crap, and I call it crap, get their boat numbers. Track them down, do something. I know a few people that tried to track them down, and he got a little belligerent with them. Uh, last I heard, the DNR and the Sheriff's Department did get involved. I hope they take his boat. But that, you know, if you see people swimming or out by their dock, take your jet ski out a little bit, you know? Pick your skier up, take them out, and then stay away from people's docks. Uh, that's common courtesy. So, I got. Have a good Fourth.
Does that wrap it up?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard?